Chair, you are live.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Here.
Okay, clear, huh? Okay, it's, uh, today is Wednesday, August 20th. We're gonna start the meeting at 6:02 PM. Rob Botley?
Chair Hamadeh.
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Tran.
Uh, here.
And Commissioner Wolbert.
I'm here.
Chair, you have a call with all members present.
Perfect. We're gonna solve the flag, please. Can you join me? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A report from Planning Commission. Clerk, other communication.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you, Chair.
It's party communication. You want anything to say? No. Next one on the slide. Special presentation. None. All communication. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter. Jurisdiction of the Planning Commission members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission. Comments should be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record. Do we have anyone to speak?
Yes, Chair, we have one speaker, Terry Reins.
Hello, I hope the recording of this meeting doesn't have technical issues like the last meeting did. The YouTube video had no sound from the beginning until the end of my public comments. Staff informed me of this after the meeting and asked me to record and send to them audio of my comments so they could overdub it, which I did. Then they said, no need. They were able to boost the PCTA audio and were going to upload a fixed video to YouTube on the 10th, but only the original one with the sound issue is on YouTube as of today. No email from staff with this meeting's agenda until yesterday after I finally sent an email Monday night about it. I'm on Patricia's mailing list for PC agendas and I'm signed up through the city's subscription service for all notifications, but I didn't get a thing until after I reached out. Item seven, still no minutes presented even though Ken said at your last meeting that he hoped to present at least two sets of meetings at this, on this agenda. What happened? Minutes aren't rocket science. You can't blame the city clerk who was just trying to help staff comply with city policy and law. Again, why aren't there already approved April 2nd minutes on the website yet? April 16th, May 7th, July 2nd, and August 6th meetings, all not yet presented. Minutes should be presented at the next meeting, not three to four months or even a year later. Public hearings are quasi judicial proceedings and as such, the approved legal record must be produced in a timely manner. Update to what I shared at your last meeting about Vice Chair Tony Bowie and Garden Grove's Mayor Protem Joe DeVine on Vietnamese language media. On July 30th, they appeared again, DeVine wearing his official Garden Grove jacket while Vice Chair Bowie smiled and nodded as DeVine made comments such as, "I have reasons why I criticize Westminster. I could go back to Westminster and I could be mayor. Don't think I will sit in Garden Grove forever. I'm wearing the Garden Grove shirt, but I don't have to stay there. I'm not limited to Garden Grove. I will call on the people to vote for me and I will be mayor of Westminster. Don't forget, everyone, I can move there. I'm not nice." I spoke before the Garden Grove City Council last week presenting comments from both videos and informing them, DeVine is a defendant in a $9 million breach of contract lawsuit involving two of his defunct development companies. DeVine later responded claiming what he did was protected political speech and issued what many consider to be a veiled threat against me for divulging this information. Newsflash, slander is never protected political speech. Remember, Vice Chair Bowie stated our city has deadlock development problems, staff is not well coordinated, and that employees are inefficient, sluggish, and just want to pass the time to get paid. He did not report positive changes made to community development this year. Developers and business owners often view Planning Commission and city council meetings, I can slow down, I had time, when considering doing business in a city. So now, you all know why so many developers and businesses are really hesitant to invest in Westminster. And you've got your own vice chair who's smirking at me as I speak to blame. So again, remember, what you do in these meetings resonates out in the outside world and it has an impact. So be on your best behavior or step off this commission. Thank you.
Chair, we have no further speakers.
Okay, we're gonna move to the next one, number seven. There's none, approval minute is none. We're at the public hearing now. Anyone wish to speak on any open item, open public hearing should complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided five minutes rebuttal with the exception of the applicant or designee. All attendees may only speak once. The Planning Commission may use its discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allotted time or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions. We're gonna move to case 8.1, 2025-0166. Stick in.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. We are here tonight for case number 2025-0166. This is a Code text amendment to revise the minimum residential density to 30 dwelling units per acre in the housing overlay zone. For background, the housing overlay is used to provide a minimum density for housing element sites. The six-cycle housing element which was approved by council and certified by the state is used to set the RENA numbers that the city must provide for. Those RENA numbers are units that the city needs to plan for. We don't need to build, we're not, we're not in the business of building, but we needed to plan for those for the future availability of housing in the city and state. The original mixed-use zoning was passed on December 14th, 2022 to provide the density necessary for the RENA numbers provided in the housing element. The city is currently working on amending the mixed-use development standards. Per a city council study session late last year, staff is looking at raising the minimum density in the mixed-use zone to around 80 units per acre. Recently, staff has received interest in developing several housing overlay sites at densities closer to the 18 to 25 units per acre range. Mixed-use zones and housing overlay are shown on the map. The mixed-use zones are in blue. The light blue is the mixed-use 36 zone, which allows for 36 units per acre. The dark blue is the mixed-use 40 zone, which allows for up to 40 units per acre. The housing overlay sites are the crosshatch sites within the map. Every housing overlay site is within a mixed-use zoning district, but not every mixed-use zoning site is covered by the housing overlay. Staff has been referring to densities, so we wanted to give you kind of a visual picture of what these densities look like. The densities on the screen are approximately 20 to 25 unit per acre projects. These normally include garden apartments, two-story apartments, and townhomes. At densities above 30 units per acre, we are looking at bigger apartments. The ones on screen are approximately 60 to 70 units per acre and are normally not for sale units, but rental units. The zoning code amendment we are presenting for your recommendation of approval today amends Section 17.250.035 of the Westminster Municipal Code. That is the housing overlay section. We are looking to increase the minimum density in the housing overlay from 20 units per acre to 30 units per acre. This is to ensure that we get development that is closer to the numbers reported in our housing element. For the housing element, staff relied on 85% capacity for every housing element site to get to our RENA numbers. This relate, this, for the MU 36 and MU 40 zone, this relates to about 32 units per acre. By going to, from 20 to 30 units per acre, we are ensuring that the city is closer to our RENA numbers and will not have a shortfall. Any shortfall could require the city to reopen its housing element and choose new sites. It's important to note that if the housing element is reopened, it is not reopened just for sites and HCD would have a chance to demand additional concessions from the city in all parts of the housing element. Staff is also looking to add language which would add the ability to apply the housing overlay to sites other than housing element sites. Currently, the language in the housing overlay says that it is there to enforce the housing element. We are looking to add language that would allow staff to put the housing overlay over any site that had the ability to provide a significant amount of housing for the city in the future. Staff is currently looking to take this zoning code amendment to the city council on September 10th, 2025. It's important to note that at the last city council meeting on August 13th, the city council enacted a moratorium that prevents density under 30 units per acre on any housing overlay site. The zoning code amendment that we are presenting now seeks to codify the amendment, or the moratorium that they passed. The current zoning code amendment is exempt from CEQA under the common sense exemption. We are not adding any density, we are not adding any uses that are not currently allowed. We're just seeking to provide a minimum floor. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission improve, recommend approval to the city council of a zoning code amendment amending Section 17.250.035 of the Westminster Municipal Code. That concludes my presentation and staff is here to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone else should speak on this? Adam? Any question? You have question? You have question?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. And we'd like to know whether our new requirement comply with the state regulations.
It does, this is to ensure, this is to ensure that we meet the standards that we already have submitted to the state for our housing element.
How about federal requirement?
There are no federal requirements for this.
And have you taken into account of the density of people with the amount of police or fire department which can help with the increasing population?
We are not increasing the density with this, with this zoning code amendment, we are simply looking to add a floor. So the zoning that is in place allows 36 to 40 units per acre now, we are just looking at a floor of 30 units per acre to make sure we hit the numbers we have reported to the state. Fire and police have already gone through the densities that are in place and have found no problems with those. That was done in 2012 when the mixed-use zoning was put in place.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak on this? Any questions? Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We do, Chair. Terry Reins.
Hello, the staff report header reflects item to 8.2, not 8.1, on pages after page one. And again, there's misleading false wording at the end of the proposed resolution. Quote, "Hereby recommends that the city council adopt a proposed ordinance as provided in the attached Exhibit 1," unquote. There's no ordinance attached. Reward to something like hereby recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance modifying Section 17250.035, housing overlay of the city's municipal code as shown in Exhibit 1. As for Exhibit 1, standard procedure for amending law is to provide redline version of the existing code and then a clean copy of what the proposed code will look like with the amendments. You have a redline version and a clean copy of only the original code, which is already presented in the redline version. What isn't red is original. The redline version deletes Sections B1, B, and C and amends B1A, but no clean version of the revised code reflecting these amendments as presented that you are being asked to recommend approval of. Alternatively, just present the redline version. Period. The urgency ordinance passed by the city council last week was technically not compliant with state law. Government Code 65858C states, "A legislative body shall not adopt or extend any interim ordinance pursuant to this section unless the ordinance contains legislative findings that there is a current and immediate threat to the public health, safety, or welfare and that the approval of any entitlement for use which is required in order to comply with the zoning ordinance would result in that threat to public health, safety, or welfare." The ordinance didn't meet that legal standard. Allowing density in the housing overlay of 20 to 30 units per acre would not be a threat to public health, safety, or welfare, quite the opposite. It's only urgent because the city failed to amend the code when the housing overlay in MU 36 and MU 40 zoning was created back in 2022 or in the housing element. An applicant could easily challenge the moratorium legally. To be clear, the moratorium was imposed to stop, stop known interested applicants from getting entitlements to build housing on sites in the overlay with densities between 20 units per acre and up to 30 units per acre that is currently allowed in the code. Error, Section 3.1 of the resolution, "The minimum density will..." and then, what is it? It's blank. Who proof these documents before they're presented? Section 2, regarding CEQA, states, "The ordinance will not impact the type or intensity of use already allowed on the properties." False. "The ordinance will force higher densities by way of a lower, higher minimum into the overlay and will not allow densities 20 to 30 units per acre that are currently allowed." The staff report states, "It's important to note that no minimum density requirements would be placed on sites outside the housing overlay." But it also says additional language has been added, included which would allow the city to place the housing overlay over sites within the city that, which have the ability to provide for this substantial amount of housing. And finally, I'm asking this commissioner of the city council to amend the housing overlay code without presenting a map until on the screen here is disingenuous and grossly non-transparent with the public and the commission. Do better, Westminster.
Chair, we have no further speakers.
Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing.
Yeah, I have a question. So we've just heard from some comments regarding the documents that have been prepared and approved by the city councils. So from the staff perspective, where are we? Where do we go from here?
From the staff perspective, that moratorium is in place. That is not the purview of the city council, of this commission. And we are not moving forward with any approval of that. We are moving forward with approval of a permanent ordinance. So the moratorium has been, it's in place. That was done at the last city council meeting. Because it was an urgency ordinance, it went into effect immediately. Any discussion as to the legality of that? Our city attorney looked at it, he was okay with it. So it would have to go to court at this point.
But again, to be clear, that is not the matter before this commission tonight. Tonight is a separate ordinance before you.
Well, there were some points brought up too regarding the documents prepared for the Planning Commission. So are they, you're comfortable with those?
Yes, we're comfortable. I mean, there is no intensification of use on these sites. We are maintaining that you have to meet a minimum density, but you could already build at densities greater than that. So we are not intensifying the use on the site. These, these densities per acre were already allowed by code. We are just ensuring that any project that comes in meets the standards that the city has already adopted in its certified housing element and that we get a quality product that can actually, or that can move the city forward. Any questions?
I have some statements, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Go for it.
Okay. I tend to agree with some legality here, but obviously there are some definite issues with the resolution. The maps that you included in your presentation were not included in our packet. So that's a bit of information that would have been nice for commissioners to have, to look at the actual areas of the city that you're referring to with MU 36 and MU 40. So we didn't have that in front of us even before this meeting. So it kind of leaves us a little bit handcuffed here. Me personally, I think the way California is going is they're trying to override all local control over all housing and I think that's wrong. I think it's unconstitutional for the state to be able to do that. And I think Westminster seems to be rushing towards maximum high density versus the least amount of density, which we both know, and I know, and I will confirm that, the quality of human life is better at lower density. There's no question about that. We need to line up a room full of psychologists to talk about that. Other than only wanting to meet RENA requirements, which there are no penalties for not meeting RENA requirements, there's no, there's, there's nothing happens to a city. There's no penalty for not meeting your RENA requirement. Why are we rushing to try to make density higher than it needs to be? I think 20 is fine for these units. Me personally, I'm not in favor of this resolution whatsoever. I think the city council is going in the wrong direction and I would not like to recommend this to the city council.
Any more speakers? Commissioners?
Yes, I have some comment regarding the quality of life. I agree with you, my colleague here, that the quality of life is decreasing if we have a higher density of people. So in that case, you have to balance it out so that the quality of life will be better as long as the density rising up to certain limit, not to the maximum. And I agree with that.
Yeah, just a question for staff. So Commissioner, we heard that there are no penalties for not meeting the regional housing needs assessment numbers, is that true?
That is actually incorrect. If we are too far under our RENA numbers, there are penalties that could come into play, including having whatever our shortfall is in RENA added to our next RENA's assessment in 2031. But there are state laws because cities were purposely basically playing with the numbers that unless you provide a certain percentage of those, there are penalties.
Can you tell us what kind of penalty will be?
I'd have to look into it more. I know one of the penalties is they can actually add your shortfall to the next RENA number. So if your RENA number was going to be 10,000, but you were 6,000 units short, they could actually make your RENA number 16,000.
Ooh, and then what? Slap you on the hand? This is California overreach at its finest. These laws are unconstitutional for the state. I know we're trying to comply with them. We don't need to, in my opinion. There's plenty of cities that are trying to not comply with them. And there's zero penalties. There's no financial penalty, there's maybe a slap on the wrist. Okay, they're gonna add, we're a fully developed city. There's no land to build. We don't need to add 14, 15,000, 19,000 low-income housing units. And if somebody wants to come in with a great project at 20 units per acre in areas that are already zoned for 20 units per acre, that sounds fantastic. More people are gonna want to live there. We're gonna attract the quality type of people into Westminster that we want at 20 units per acre. We don't need to make it 30, in my opinion. There's no legal requirement to do so. So I'd like to make a motion that we do not pass this resolution and do not recommend it to the city. You didn't give us a resolution number of what a non-recommendation would be. So whatever that resolution would be for a non-recommendation.
You can recommend denial of the resolution. We do just need you to make one of the three findings in a negative.
Sure. Sure. I think it creates a conflict with general point, but it doesn't need to.
Well, could that be, for example, in, in finding two where it says the proposed amendment would not be detrimental? Just say the proposed amendment would be detrimental?
That's it.
You wanted to make the finding of that and then go on the proposed, proposed amendment proposes a change that will affect issues relating to public health, safety?
Public interest, health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the city. All that pointed number two is what I think it actually does.
So Commissioner Wilbert, if I may restate your motion for the record, you make a motion to recommend denial of the resolution, or to make a motion to recommend denial of the proposed ordinance to the city council based on the finding that it would be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the city.
Thank you, that's, that's how I would like to state it.
I'll second that.
What call, please? Thank you. So I have a motion made by Commissioner Wilbert, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. This is to deny adopting the resolution with the findings of the proposed amendment would be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the city. I've got a call roll. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Wilbert?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Chair Hamadeh?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
So this item will go to the city council on September 10th with your recommendation of denial. Uh, yes, Chair, we do. Uh, we would like to mention that there is a survey on our website, on the planning pages. We are redoing the sign code at this time and there is a survey about signage that residents like, don't like, how they, you know, how they perceive signage within the city that every resident, every developer, every interested party is welcome to complete, including the five of you. Um, we will keep that open for approximately three more weeks. Then we will take the findings, give them to our consultant and meet with them about the direction we are going to go with our sign code. Uh, there will be a study session at some point going over proposed changes before we get too far into the ordinance. On September 3rd, we will be bringing the ADU and SB9 code text amendments. I know the two of you will not be here, but we will bring that on that day for recommendation to council. Uh, we will not have a meeting on the 17th of September and sometime either before the October 1st meeting or the November 5th meeting, we will be having an, a workshop on ADUs before the Planning Commission meeting, so that would run from 5 to 6 directly before this meeting. Um, additionally, we did want to follow up with information about lavender. They did come on, in this week to try to pull building permits. Uh, they needed to go to, um, pull a sewer permit first, which is not done by the city, that's handled by the, um, blanking on the name here? Midway City, thank you. Uh, they did pull that permit, or they did try to pull that permit. It's about three days for Midway to approve a sewer hookup. Uh, we do know that they have applied and paid for Midway. They are planning on coming back in early next week once they get approval from Midway to pull their building permits. And that is all from staff.
Thank you. Okay, next one. Number four, National Planning Commission included AD1234 reports were required. Everybody has anything? Okay, we're adjourned.
Did we skip the number 11 matter from staff?
He just spoke about.
Can I input some of my comments regarding some, uh, activists or some people comment on me to public?
Yeah, that, that's not a Planning Commission matter, Vice Chair.
Because, is, you know, you have listened only one side of the people who talk about me, you, they mentioned my name in there. Now I would like to clarify what I have been doing to protect the city of Westminster in progress and comment on anything that the city is slow in some things. And I have my right to express it to the public. And I would like to share it with you, the email that I sent to Christine Corden regarding some people asking for my, uh, criticize my comment on the progress of the city. The people who did send you on paperwork that, that is wrongful. I have the First Amendment to talk anything as long as it not harm the city of Westminster. Okay? And I have the, uh, letter of, uh, email I sent to Christine Corden. I would like to pass to each of my colleague.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, um, I would recommend that you provide that to staff and we will review that, um, and, um, just make sure that we don't have any Brown Act issues before passing that out to the rest of the commission.
Yes, I would like to pass because this has been publicly sent to Christine Corden, the secretary of the city of Westminster.
Yeah, um.
Would you like to make that?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, could we just convene with you after the meeting and we'll ha, be happy to review that with you?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we are adjourned to our next meeting on September 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.